All right, going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for February 11, 2020. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out in this soggy weather. First thing we've got is council comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about?
Well, I just wanted to say, I think we all know, we've had quite a bit of rain in this area, all over southwest Virginia, in the past few days and week or so, and I wanted to thank all of our first responders. I know our firefighters have not only been working hard to help folks here, but they've also traveled to other areas in southwest Virginia, so we appreciate them.
I echo Council McFarnham's comments. That's why I was going to commend the fire department, and particularly the Swiftwater Rescue, the tactical response team. As I've said before, they're not just an asset to this city, but really to this, to our whole region. When something like happened last week happens, they're, we're very fortunate to have them available to go out and respond, so I appreciate the work they do.
All right, thank you. I don't really have anything much to add as far as, far as comments myself. I believe the city manager does, so I'll go ahead and throw you the microphone.
Yes, I just want to kind of update everyone on where the legislation is in regards to casino gaming in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Earlier today, the House passed legislation 61 to 33. I've just, as I sat here, pulled up the Senate, and it looks like it's moving through the Senate fairly easily at this point. I do not believe it has been voted on in final form, but it looks, appears that it will be here shortly. I also want to say thank you to every legislator, specifically our southwest Virginia delegation. They've worked extremely hard on this for the past two years to get this through, and Senator Louise Lucas from Portsmouth has been working diligently on this for 24 years to get this legislation passed. I think this will be a unique opportunity for every fiscally distressed area that's in this legislation in the Commonwealth of Virginia to take advantage of this and not only use it as a one-time economic development boost, but hopefully it'll be a catalyst which will lead to other types of development to come to these fiscally distressed localities.
All right, thank you very much. Matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. We have one person who has signed up, and that is Ms. Marnie. That's you, you're up.
I didn't hear the project's vote.
I was going to give you a drum roll when you got closer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a citizen in Bristol, Virginia, resident. I'm a property owner. I do pay my tax. Beware of false assumptions. Beware of false assumptions. The devil is in the detail. The devil is in the detail. Do not keep digging the hole deeper if you're trying to get out of it. Remember what Einstein said, "There is no cure for stupidity."
All right, thank you very much. Item D is adoption of the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
A move that we adopt the agenda with one change. I'd like to pull item number seven out of the consent agenda and have it voted on separately.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with the change that item seven, which is a street closure request, be voted on separately, and that motion was made by the vice mayor, and then he has second.
Second.
And the second from Mr. Farnham, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Bump Power.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Yes. All right, regular agenda, item one, public hearing on the conveyance of 2,991 square feet of property to the Sessions Properties LLC. The hearing is open. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a public hearing in regards to the exchange of property in exchange for a deed of easement to be conveyed by the Sessions Hotel. This public hearing was advertised on January 29th of 2020 in the Bristol Herald Courier. The city owns the land adjoining Sessions' property as part of the Good Street parking lot. However, a small portion of this property is not used for the parking lot due to the steep bank that exists there at that existing space. The city, which has heard, and this council has heard on several occasions, the need for a handicap ramp from that Good Street parking lot to State Street, so the city, through the CDBG funds, is building a ramp from the Good Street parking lot all the way to the sidewalk that will connect the Good Street parking lot to State Street. This deed of gift to the Sessions Hotel is contingent upon the deed of easement to be executed by the Session, which would convey public access from the parking lot to State Street across the hotel property. The deeds, the resolutions, and the surveys and the photos are attached for anyone to view. And I think that's all I need to say right now.
All righty, very good, thank you. There is one person who has signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I, I think that this will, exchange will be beneficial to both the city and the business. It will enable us to put some property that's owned by the city back on the tax rolls, and that's always a very beneficial thing. And in exchange, we're going to get access to put a sidewalk from a parking lot that's currently very difficult to access to State Street, which is one of the areas that most needs access to, to a parking lot. I would, anytime the city transfers property, though, it would be nice to at least get some upfront cash for it. We are basically selling property for the value of a dollar, and the property's worth a lot more than the dollar, but I am very glad to see that there will be beneficial use made of it, and the city is getting something in exchange. It's just, I'd like, I would like it even better if the city were to get the fair appraisal value out of it, but what we can get is what we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. And item two is resolution authorizing the city manager's signed deed conveying 2,991 square feet of city property to the Sessions Properties LLC. Staff report.
Wait, we'll let Ms. Morgan present if you want to show the pictures.
Okay, well, I can. Just for more information, you had pictures in your packet, but this better describes what really is access from Good Street parking lot to State Street. And just to see the before and see how that sloped area is not useful to the city for parking, but is where the ramp will be located at the end of the parking lot. And I believe the next pictures were taken today to show progress on that walkway. And that is the survey plat with that piece of property, 2,991 square feet, kind of L-shaped, and then the engineering drawings for how the ramp will be configured there. So this is, as the city manager said, a win-win situation to allow the city an opportunity to have the access there.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, no one's signed up for public comment, so item C is reading of the resolution.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, authorizing city managers' signed deed conveying 2,991 square feet of city property to the Sessions Property LLC. Section one, the city council finds that whereas the city of Bristol owns the land adjoining the Sessions Property LLC, the land being part of the Good Street parking, public parking lot acreage and identified as parcel ID number 36 hyphen 5 hyphen H hyphen 5 and 36 hyphen 5 hyphen H hyphen 5A, and whereas a small portion of this track, identified on a plat recorded in plat book four, page 595, as being 2,991 square feet in size, cannot practically be used for the parking lot and is needed by the Sessions Property LLC, and whereas the city has proposed and is building an ADA accessible public sidewalk and ramp that will connect the Good Street sidewalk and parking lot to State Street, and whereas the city needs to reserve and obtain a public easement to cross the property owned by the Sessions Property LLC. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Bristol, Virginia. Section two, the city council authorizes the city manager to sign and record a deed conveying 2,991 square feet of property, as shown in plat book four, page 595, with the reservation of a permanent easement for the construction and use of an ADA accessible sidewalk ramp on the entirety of the aforementioned track. And section three, the authorization is contingent on a deed of easement to be executed and recorded by the Sessions Property LLC to grant the city a five-foot sidewalk easement adjacent to the Sessions Building and connecting the aforementioned track with the State Street sidewalk. Passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council held on the 11th day of February 2020.
All right, thank you very much. So I am looking for a motion and a second on this.
A move that we adopt a resolution.
Second.
So the motion was made by the vice mayor and the second by Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
Well, my only concerns with this project was one that we would not lose any of the parking lot. I've been assured that the footprint of the parking lot is not going to change. And other than that, my concern was, you know, having government-owned sidewalks on private property. You know, mixing that, I can see potential conflicts down the road years when things need to be replaced and reworked, so we just need to make sure that in 50 years, we've got access to get in there and rework that ramp, and there's not going to be any conflicts there. I was listening closely when you read the resolution, and it mentions five feet right-of-way for the, the ramp. But you're going to have to have more than that for, for maintenance going in in the future, so the city has got to be able to get in there and work on that years down the road.
You have a five for the, the ramp is more than five feet. It's the sidewalk adjacent to the building that's the five feet is for the, for the sidewalk adjacent to the Sessions Hotel. Usually in those types of situations, one, we have a permanent deed of easement, which extends for perpetuity, and typically what happens in these situations, we would obtain a temporary easement from the property owner to be able to use a portion of the parking lot for staging or whatever we needed to do during any type of reconstruction or repair of a sidewalk.
And that is the lower parking lot that the Sessions owns?
Yes, the Sessions owns that lower parking.
The lower parking lot, okay. So it's, it's worded to where you can get in there with the equipment to maintain that section?
Well, we have the deed of easement for that, that's correct, and then we also have a permanent deed of easement for the remaining of that portion, too. The five foot specifically discusses the portion next to the building of the Sessions Hotel.
Okay, that's my two major concerns, is we've got to be able to maintain it with clear rightaways, and we've got to protect every inch of parking lot that we currently have downtown, so I'm, I'm encouraged that the footprint of that parking lot's not going to change.
And I think Wallace has looked at that extensively in designing that and to make sure that we have more handicap accessible spaces. You can see we've had a couple of handicap spaces closest to the ramp there. We've actually, we'll repaint those lines. As it's painted now, it was a little more difficult, and I think turning was an issue, and I think with his redesign of it, it'll make people be able to back in and out a little bit easier than what it was in the past as well.
How many handicap spaces are currently there, and are they located in the same?
There's none specifically there that I'm aware of. It seems like I've seen, of course, I was up there today just to look at everything again, but it seemed like they were further on this, further in down towards the east part of the.
Towards the library.
Right. But I don't think they were clearly marked.
So I have one question that we kind of talked about earlier, but maybe if we could go into a little bit more detail, just so it's clear in my mind. So you, you've got this gravel parking lot that's kind of off State Street here that the Sessions owns, right? Well, maybe not gravel, but.
It's paved now.
Yeah, okay. And then you've got the grass part that goes up, that's what connects to Good Street.
Right.
So the, the grass part's kind of a, kind of a hill coming down, so what kind of, it's going to be pretty steep, or how are they, could you go into more detail on how they're going to make it not such a steep grade coming down?
Well, according to ADA accessibility for every one foot in rise, I think you have to have, is it 12 feet in length?
Yes.
So for every one foot in elevation change, you have to have 12 feet in length in order for people with, in wheelchairs and, that are, have mobility issues to be able to climb it, go up or down it without too much trouble, so that's.
So it'll minimize the, the steepness of it, so basically it'll be like a zigzag.
It'll be, it's going to be a switchback. You can see.
You can see the path of the. Walkway is on that drawing right there.
Okay.
Comes down here and then turns and goes down like that.
Okay.
One other question, and we may have discussed this, I know we talked about this previously with the CGGB funding. Is there going to be any lighting along there?
Do you know? I haven't heard of that yet, but.
Just curious, especially along that ramp, but I don't know how much light, you know, it's kind of far from both of the streets.
I'll make sure it's there.
Yeah.
Well. I just wanted to say, I think this will, this will look great. I think if anyone's been by the Sessions, you can see work is coming along, and it's looking pretty good, and for the longest time, it seems like we've had this collection of activity in downtown Bristol, and it's been really in this block or two, and then over the years, it's started to spread out a little bit, so this is kind of coming down on that in a State Street, so I think it'll be great. I think we just need to keep doing everything we can to, to, to keep up downtown, and so it's good.
All right, if there's no other discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Bump Power.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, item three is a supplemental appropriation of the amount of $317,006. Staff report.
Members of council, decided is to appropriate carryover of $64,763 of state monies received in fiscal year 19, and the local match of $11,879. The state has approved the carryover of these funds, and to appropriate additional state funds approved by the state in a local match for those state funds. These funds will be used for the renovation of the newly purchased DSS building.
All right, thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And these items are on the regular agenda because they'll be appropriated from, the local piece will be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, and those items will be presented to council on the regular agenda.
Thank you very much. No one has signed up for public comment, so I would need a motion and a second.
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Farnham, and second from Mr. Hartley, and council discussion.
One, I'm very grateful the state is matching these local funds, keep that, our local costs down. I guess my question is, as, following this appropriate, making this change, how quick, or has the, I guess we have to wait on this before the work will begin?
They've done some preliminary work at this point. I don't think any funds have been expended. It's basically just been city labor, and this money has to be expended by June 30th, per the state, so there's a very short timeline in order to get this, everything up there done and moved in so that social services can use these funds the way that they were intended.
Will, will they have enough time?
They're going to, they're going to make enough time.
Okay.
So can you go over some of the things that this will actually, some of the specific things that we're going to be doing at the building?
Well, I have Jeff Justice here, Director of Social Services, and I think he can probably go into a little more detail as to what's going to happen up there at that facility.
First of all, on behalf of the board and the staff of the department, I wanted to thank council, city manager's office, Wallace and Mr. Maines and their staff for their Relating to the transformation of the building, as he had indicated, there's been some preliminary work done, but major needs that need to be addressed are the roof, the roof leaks, so they're going to have to have roof replacement, and there's some HVAC needs to attend to. Other than that, it's transforming the interior to, to suit the needs, building offices. It had two pretty large, open interior spaces, which is what made it very suitable for someone to come in and customize. You know, kind of the way we're looking at it is prudence with these funds that have been graciously provided by, by the state and that could be matched by the city. It's not making it the Taj Mahal. It's making it functional with, with prudence. You know, for instance, I can give an example of that, just, just because the tile in the bathroom may be a certain color, there's no reason to tear all that out and go to work in there. It's necessary needs that need to happen for, to transform the building and, and make the building usable again.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Justice while we've got him up here?
No questions. I just wanted to say, I think this is great that, you know, we saw the presentation the night, the pictures of the current office and the current condition, and we made the decision that, you know, the cost of refurbishing that office could be astronomical, and then we found a building, we agreed upon, you know, what we thought was a good deal, not above a certain price, and we were able to get it for around that price, so, and I think it's great that some of the, well, a lot of the money coming to fix up where they're going is coming from the state. I guess part of what I wanted to talk about is related to this, but it's a little different. It's involving, once they move, we will still own the current building that they're currently in, which will be sitting empty. I don't think anyone likes to see empty buildings sitting around, so, you know, we've discussed more about selling off certain properties that the city owns to get it into the hands of taxpayers, because once we don't own the building anymore, and whether it be an individual or a company, the city can start collecting real estate taxes again, so I definitely think we need to stay on top of our plan as far as discussing which city properties we'll keep, which city properties we'll sell. We've got several on the market right now, so I think that's important, that we just don't let a building sit empty and deteriorate and just not look good in the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I did not sign up for this because somehow I've gotten things mixed up here on which, which goes for what, but I have thought of something concerning this way. I address the.
Let us finish our, our part, and then I'll, I'll let you do it before we.
Maybe a minute.
I'll, I'll be just a minute. The one thing that I'll say on it, you know, I had, I had some reservations initially about the building, but, but I will say, you know, kudos, I think, to Councilman Wingard, who I guess alerted us to this building initially being an option, so I mean, I think it's going to be nice when it's done. I think it's going to look real good, you know. Obviously, we'll have to stay on top of, you know, bus lines for people to be able to get there if they need to, because it's, it's taking it out of a neighborhood that utilizes the building as it is, so we'll have to stay on top of making sure people are able to get there. But as far as the building itself, things can look real good. Things will look real nice. Do we have anything else? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Let me ask a question here. I need to have some clarification. Is the purchase of this building a done deal? Is it, is the contract signed, et cetera, et cetera?
I believe it is.
The property's in the city's name now.
Did you say yes or no?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
All right. I was thinking about this, I've talked with a number of people about this, and I've thought about this the last few days. It seems to me like that that building is really not appropriate to be used in the way it is going to be used. Now, the reason I say that is, is more than one reason. Number one, I think if the city of Bristol, Virginia were doing what I think the city should be doing, we would be downsizing not going up. Now, this building is far bigger than, I know where that Washington Street School is. When I was a little girl, it was an elementary school, but it's an enormous jump in size, and in the way I look at things, it would seem to me that it would be more in the city's best interest to do a better job of downsizing the social services. I know that at one time, the city of Bristol, Virginia had the largest social service up per capita of any city in the state of Virginia. I don't think that's a compliment. It's not a compliment in my mind. I think if the city were doing what I think the city ought to be doing, we would be getting people off and out. Now, I was never in favor of buying that building, of the city buying that building. I think it's in the wrong place, because the people who use the social services the most are going to have trouble getting transportation. Yes, the city bus system goes up there however often, but nonetheless, the people are over here and the social services is out there. Now, my suggestion would be to, I don't know what the law says now about the state giving that money, but I would suggest that the city repurpose that building and find a different building that is already built, and it's just there causing us trouble. I would suggest the city repurpose that building and try to market it. That's a good-sized building up there, and it might be marketable. Who knows? I already know of two businesses that are going to leave and two more that are standing on a banana peel. But that would be my suggestion, gentlemen. Give it a little thought. Repurpose the building and try to find a smaller, already-built building. Now, let's don't get into content versus ticks of the clock. That upsets me terribly. But anyway, there are other buildings that, in my mind, would be more appropriate for this particular use, and then market the bigger building if we could. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your letting me speak.
Thank you. All right, is there any further council discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'll just make a few comments.
Oh, yeah, I'll just make a few comments. What we have to realize, and I'll be the first to admit, I mean, government's huge. Government needs to be pulled back in. It's, it's, it's for decades been growing by leaps and bounds. But on this particular subject, I'm gonna say that the Department of DSS truly did need this building. They're over there in a building that was never designed to have offices in the basement. The basement has issues. And I understand your concern and your reservations about the location of it, but we do have city transit, and, you know, you just can't put everything in everybody's backyard. People have to be able to commute back and forth for various reasons. But the city had a great opportunity to buy this building, and we took advantage of it, and I'm glad we did. But I'm glad to see that the state is willing to put forth money and reallocate and appropriate the monies to renovate this. But what we have to realize in this city and be mindful of, because it is hu- huge for us, we have to overcome these statistics. Mr. Justice is sitting in the audience with us tonight. He has already spoken, and if I misspeak, I would like for you to correct me. But it is not uncommon for 50% of this city to receive some type of social benefit from the Department of DSS. That is not uncommon. 50%. That is huge. So with that being said, it takes men and women to allocate those benefits and to meet the social needs of this city because of lack of jobs, quality jobs, that will sustain a household income and then be able to thrive. We are not known for those types of businesses, and we have to change that so that the DSS Department can start shrinking, because the people are back to work making a viable wage that will actually pay the bills and keep food on the table. We have a long, long road to hoe in this city. And for those that think, because we have a little bit of money in the bank right now, that the battle is over, it's not. We've still got a long ways to go. I am not one that is an advocate of spending the government's money and squandering it, but this is a project that I fully support because of the big picture and the needs that have to be met until we can change the circumstances in our environment.
I just wanna say something that might shock some people, but, Mr. Wingard, I agree with everything you just said.
That's a surprise.
We agree sometimes.
All right. On that note, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item four, discussion of unassigned fund balance. Staff report.
Mayor and members of council, we were discussing the unassigned fund balance and the amount over the policy threshold. The unassigned fund balance per the fiscal year 19 audit was 16.3 million, or 27% at the policy calculation. Once we back out, the fiscal year 18 refinance savings remaining in the unassigned fund balance are $437,000. The fiscal year 19 carryover items are $407,000, and the DSS renovation costs, that amount reduces to 26% or 15.3 million. The policy calculation at 18% is 10.6 million. The excess over the policy is 4.7 million. Of that 1.1 million will be utilized to transfer the July 2020 debt payment to June of 2020. This will leave available before fiscal year items 3.5 million. Fiscal year 20 nonrecurring items that will be proposed to be paid from the prior year unassigned fund balance are: to accelerate the timing of the Commissioner of Revenue reassessment to this fiscal year, the amount of $100,000; professional fees of $200,000; network redesign, which is critical to the city's infrastructure, $90,000; physical security for all city buildings of $96,000; courthouse x-ray machine of $22,000; sheriff's vests of $24,000; for a total of $533,000 that will be proposed, aren't proposed tonight, but will be from the available fiscal year 19 amount. Available funds reduced down to 3 million. So council options for discussion include maintaining an amount greater than 18%. For instance, $11 million would be 18.65% of the policy, making $2.6 million available. Another option is to fund the reserve account. Currently, there is 1.4 million in the reserve account with a goal of 5 million. The debt payment plan presented by Davenport would utilize $2 million of, of this available amount. Capital items previously discussed by council have included payoff of the DSS building of around $600,000 or school capital items, and of course, any other considerations by council. No action needs to be taken tonight. This is for discussion purposes only. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Before we get into council discussion, I have two people who signed up to speak on this, and first one is Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I do pay my taxes. I did not intend that the social services should not have a building. I said they should not have that building. Now, that cleans up that little misunderstanding there. Plus the fact, for the last 50 years, the city has not solved the problem that you said we should be addressing. I know that for a fact. Check it out. We're not doing, we're not doing anything about correcting that situation that is functionally working. Now, to get to the issue at hand, we are in a catastrophic state as I speak, and that catastrophic state is debt. We are strapped absolutely straight up and down with debt. And that debt, and the catastrophic results of the debt, are that our choices of doing anything functional are extremely limited. We have few, few choices, very, very few choices, and the reason for that is stupidity. There is no cure for stupidity, and that is what brought us to this point. I was here, I heard it, I know it. Check the records. I'll validate anything I've said. Check the records. Now, we are limited. We have very few choices, but what we know we have to do is pay that debt. That isn't a choice. That's a requirement. We've gotta pay that debt. Plus the fact, we need more money, in my opinion, in the reserve fund. My goodness gracious, when you start thinking of what we owe on the jail and to fix the streets and to fix broken this and broken that and do all of this. It came up recently about, the issue came up recently about using smaller four-cylinder, I think they would be, police cars. That was tried years ago. I know, I was here, and they gave it up because it didn't work. The cars were too small, and they would not go fast enough. You can't put a four-cylinder car after a drug dealer driving a V8 400. Doesn't work, folks. It's already been tried. Now, if you wanna waste money, don't waste my money. Don't ask me for any more money for anything you've mentioned tonight, not one thing, or some things that will come up. But my suggestion is, take this windfall, if that's what we could call it, and listen to your bonds people from Richmond. Listen to them, and get this debt paid down. We, we have no elbow room. Pay the debt as far as we can, and put some money in that reserve fund, and tell everybody else, you screw your own head on straight or take a flying leap. You were functioning on our dime when we got into all this trouble. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I may have forgotten to give my address earlier. My name is Michael Pollard, 101 Ashley Drive. Could you put those numbers back on the screen, because it is relevant to the discussion? I think that it would be the, the one that, slide those up earlier. Yeah, that, that's the ideas right there. I think that we have saved this extra, supposedly extra money to go towards, the intended purpose was to go towards unexpected expenses and the upcoming debt. As such, I think they need to be reserved for unexpected expenses and the upcoming debt. The, if we can use it, use a large portion of it to pay down existing debt, and that will allow us to then refinance another amount of our debt at a much lower rate, which is the payment plan, what's indicated up there is the payment plan represented by Davenport, that will help us greatly in the long term by reducing our rates. That will potentially help us reduce the upcoming dramatic increases in the city's debt payments, so that perhaps we won't have to raise the tax rates in another couple of years when that starts coming due. The, if not all of the excess, and I don't remember the numbers right off, if not all of the excess is required to pay off the, the proposed refinancing and paying down that was proposed, then the fund reserves and increasing the unassigned fund balance would both be valid options, because both of those will help reduce future expenses, which is the purpose of the unassigned fund balance. As much as I might like to put money into capital items, and I don't think that we can afford a whole lot of that right now, and some, some capital expenses were already covered before coming to this 3.04 figure. There was about, if I remember right, about a half million in valid expenses before that, including a, a, a network redesign, and those are valid things that will reduce expenses as well. Beyond some of those things, I think we need to try to save as much as we can, because we are about to experience a huge increase in the debt payment. And I think some of these ideas listed here will help protect us for those things that are coming very shortly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council discussion.
All right, well, this is good news, to have this kind of money, that we could be sitting here talking about how we wanna allocate it, what we wanna do. Just a few years ago, this was never possible, and here we sit today, and we need to be smart about it. I would like to start a discussion that we pick somewhere around four or five options, plans, tasks, that is great needs in this city to, if we picked five projects, that would be $600,000 a project. If we wanted to pay off the DSS building that we owe $600,000 on, this pays it off. So if that was to be one of them, and we decided that five is a good number, and that's 20% of this $3 million that's left over, then we could have, if we so choose to make, paying DSS off of one of the five, then we've still got four more projects, that we still have $600,000 for each project to move this city forward and get ahead of the game. The schools have been a major issue for a couple of years now, and the school board, Mr. Parigin is in the building tonight, and he has stood before us telling us that the high school is in need of repair, because there's never any money allocated on the school side for capital improvements to stay on top of the deterioration of the facilities. It's not there. So if we chose to put $600,000 in the high school on top priority projects that need to be addressed, that have just been put in a dark corner hoping they'll go away, here is an opportunity for us to put $600,000 in the high school, and we need to talk about other projects that are top priority for this city. I'm all in favor, if 20%, if we all agree to put 20% in the reserve and build that up, because we need money in the bank, people. I know that sounds like a lot of money, that we're setting with 1.4 million dollars right now, our goal's 5 million. 1.4 in a city that a budget is taxable 55 million, but state and everything else is like 78, that's not a whole lot of money to have setting 1.4 million dollars. That can be absorbed pretty quick. So I would not be opposed to putting 20% of this $3 million back into the fund reserve and build that back up again. But I feel like, in my opinion, we need to talk about five really serious projects and issues that we need to allocate this money for. It's enough money to make a difference in certain areas, but it's not enough money to just spread out and do multiple things and think we're gonna get ahead of anything. Here is a golden opportunity for this city, and we need to be approaching this with all eyes open, all ears open, and really discussing where we want this money to go, because this is a rarity. And if we keep doing business the way we have been doing business for the past two years, this will not be an uncommon issue for us to be sitting here talking about. Excess funds, what do we wanna do with them? But if we go stupid again and start drinking the water, we're gonna end up back in the same boat. So we need to slow down, talk about this, and not make any rash decisions, and make sure we get this right, because this opportunity has not been before this city in decades.
Well, I can tell you what I think we should do with it right now. Save it, don't spend it, sock it away, take it out of the general fund, put it in the emergency fund, essentially taking it out of the city's checking account, putting it in our savings account. There's a few reasons for that, but what does everyone else think?
Well, I'll tell you, you, you mentioned you were surprised a minute ago that you agreed with Mr. Wingard. I agree with Mr. Wingard, too, right now, so I don't know what's happening.
Whoa!
I don't know if you're batting a thousand or what, but, I mean, there's, there's an argument to be made, and I think it's, I think it's positive that every one of these options up here are good options, and there's an argument to be made for every one of them. But, you know, the thing to remember, kinda like Kevin said, it, it's a one-time situation that we have this money, and there are some bigger issues that we could address with it, but, but I would agree that we wouldn't wanna blow all of it on spending all at once. It's important, especially when you're looking at the emergency reserve fund number, where we're trying to get to five or 1.4, you know, you can all day long talk about different things that could come up that you would just never think of. I just saw in the news on Friday or Saturday from all that flooding in Kentucky, that it flooded a school, school departments, a school system's entire bus parking area, all the buses were underwater. So that's, that's the kind of giant expense that you wouldn't immediately think of when you're thinking about an emergency. So I mean, I think it's important for us to get the emergency reserve fund up. So I mean, if we had a couple of things that we could take some of this money and, and apply it toward and not spend all of it... and not spend all of it and save, I would say the majority of it, I think that would be really good. I mean, we want to keep our unassigned fund balance up, but especially that emergency reserve fund, I think, needs, needs addressing because it's not, in relation to the entire budget, it's not a lot in there right now. And then on the other hand, I even like when we heard from Mr. Rose, I believe, with the Davenport, you know, that we have an opportunity to pay down some debt. So I, I think it's a testament to the good work that the CFO does that we have, A, that we have this ability to do this, but B, that we have several good options that'll make it a hard choice on what to do.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn based on the feelings that we're having.
It's going too good tonight. And if Bill chimes in and says he agrees with me, you might need to call 911 because something ain't right tonight.
Do you want me to throw some punches or something? Get us, get us back where we're supposed to be?
Not drinking any water, I'm drinking tea.
So, I, I can appreciate wanting to spend and get ahead. And I do have one question before I make this comment. Out of that 3 million, I know typically we budget $1 million as a transfer to, to reserves or to debt. Is that included in this? I mean, I know that's kind of a placeholder.
This $3 million is fiscal year 19 final results. And of fiscal year 19, we had already, council had already committed that money. So that is in addition for 1819.
So that's already been set aside?
Yes, in 1819, those funds were already committed.
You know, to me, you know, you look at, we're taking care of some needed projects that half a million that you listed. You know, I think Mr. Pollard called them valid expenses. And I would agree, there are things that we really can't wait on. Most, you know, we're making progress in a lot of areas, as you say. This is a good discussion to have. You know, one of the things that we're making progress in is with our capital plan that we're starting to allocate money on a yearly basis anticipating a lot of these needs. But sometimes you have things like that that are, I would say, very crucial and very timely. And so that, that's fine. That actually takes care of some of these projects. To me, though, the bigger issues, I think, that Mr. Pollard and Ms. Marnie hit on it, it's the debt and the reserves. When you look at what we face going forward, it's a lot of debt and it's figuring out how to pay for that. The other problem that the city has had, not as much as its debt, and I don't think people really appreciate this, is cash flow. And, you know, that's why building up that unassigned fund balance has got us off the tan. You know, as you say, this is a good thing to have. When I first got on council, we were borrowing money off the tan and never, I think, would have in a million years felt, or at least not this quickly, got to this point. But, you know, setting that aside in the reserve, the rainy day fund, the emergency fund, whatever we decided to call it, because there's so many things that can pop up that are unexpected. And having that liquidity to be able to deal with those issues as they pop up, I think, is, is key, just as having the liquidity in the unassigned fund balance. You know, I'd be interested in looking a little bit more at what Davenport presented. I think they presented an interesting option to try to give us, as I think Ms. Marnie captured it right, a little bit of elbow room, paying down some debt. So, you know, it's either keep it in reserves or pay down the debt to where you have a little bit of elbow room, finding that balance. Not opposed to looking at a project, but I think right now probably those would be my two biggest priorities. And partly because, you know, we've been fortunate. We, last year was able to set aside some money, this, or money from the previous fiscal year. This is from last fiscal year. But there's no guarantee going forward that, that these funds would be there. That's why I think the capital plan and preparing for it and budgeting that in annually is, is a good way to go. You know, maybe once we get a little bit of our debt paid down a little more in the reserve, we can look at some of these projects. I'm not sure how far 600,000 would go towards some of these. That would be my other question is, is, you know, again, that sounds like a lot of money, but, but for the high school, I have used it as the example. I had no idea what you could do with that and if that, how beneficial that would be. I know they have a need, there are a lot of needs. But I think our biggest thing is trying to, to pay down some of that debt if we can. And then setting aside the money in the reserve because there, while we know there are some needs, we can anticipate that through the budget. But there's things that pop up that we have, we, some of which we can talk about and maybe anticipate, but it's the things that we're not talking about that we need to have some funds set aside when something happens.
I was just going to make a comment real quick about, you know, what, what you had said and kind of commenting on the note, the notes I said earlier about, you mentioned, we didn't think, no one really thought we could have built up this much cash in this short amount of time. And part of me thinks is it happened quickly, but it can also change quickly. That's why, and I do think we could definitely, you know, come up with a plan as far as, you know, certain projects coming up that we could spend that money on. But for now, when I mentioned putting it in the emergency fund, you know, I think we all need to take a step back. There's someone, you know, here who tells us all the time that we need to stay the course. The city's done a good job at saving up that cash over the last few years. And now with this cash, we don't need to go on a shopping spree. And I think, you know, there's so much going on right now. You know, we, we don't know over the next six months, 12 months, you know, what kind of political turmoil there'll be, if there'll be any kind of economic slowdown. We know Cabela's just closed. And we don't know right now exactly, I don't feel, exactly what, what is going to happen with the school system, with an elementary school. And we don't know if there'll be some kind of economic development happening, like a casino in this area. So I, that's why I, I would err on the side of caution that we slow down and we, we sit on it, we put it in the emergency fund and we just let that build up. Because I also believe that the, the building up of cash that we've had over the last few years has been a contributing factor in our city's credit rating being increased. So that's always a good thing. It always looks good when credit rating agencies see that we are building up more and more cash.
Now, that's, that's a good point because when you look at the, the things that they put out and they tell you, you know, that was going back to when we first got downgraded. It was, we didn't have the unassigned fund balance, we didn't have any reserves. So, you know, they kind of lay out the plan of what they're looking for. And that is one thing. Another thing they mentioned, of course, are the high levels of debt. So if we could begin to chip away at that, I think that would put us in a, in a good financial position. So some balance between those two are, again, we're in favor.
Well, based on what I've just heard, I almost thought I was watching the Twilight Zone or something, that we've finally turned a sheet of music and we're all kind of on the same sheet of music finally. When you have a city that's been where we've been and we've, you know, we've built up the cash, it hasn't been easy, right? It's been very treacherous to get there. And it's been a lot of tough discussions. There's, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of sweating and bleeding that went into those numbers right there. But that's what you've got to do to get where we are. You know, you, you've got to make the tough decision. So I think, I think we've got to understand, we're still, we're still in a very precarious situation. You know, the economy can turn south faster than, than we think. And we're, we're way past what normally is an economic downturn. So we've been lucky. So when we're in this situation where we know if things do go south, it's very tenuous. And we know when we look at the city's finances, we have to look out in a five and seven-year projection because when you look at the debt load today, it's much different than the debt load in 2024 and 2025 and 2026. And we all know it changes very dramatically. So I think what we need to see, and my input here is, what I would like to see is a very detailed cash flow statement. I'd like to see if us manage this discussion by a cash flow statement, right? That's the way a business manages when they're in a tough spot. If they manage their cash flow right, they manage, they get out of it. So we got to manage from a cash flow, knowing what cash we've got on hand, you know, what cash we're adding to it, what the sources are that give us the cash at the top, and then what all the projects or obligations we have below that line. So we have obligations that are, have to be at the top of that priority, which is the debt load. So we need to see that cash flow statement showing those debt loads and obligations in a, in a priority kind of mechanism where the top one is the most important one that we have to take care of. But you see that not just for this fiscal year. You, you see that, what it looks like over year two, three, four and five, right? So you see what those debt load payments look like. And so then when you have a Davenport recommendation to start paying down some of that debt load, you, you've got to break that up into all the buckets he broke it up. So you see it, he recommends we pay one or two of those bonds off first and then, and then wait to see where we are. So you see that on the cash flow, you see it on a timeline, cash versus time. And we have to look at it that way, I think, to manage this properly. And we just keep looking at that cash flow, then we can, we can vote on whether that project that we're seeing there below the top line is the one we want to let the cash go or not. Because we see the total picture. You know, so it's hard to get your arms around the total picture, but CFO could do that by putting it all on one statement so we can see the, you know, the total picture for us. Because these projects we're talking like capital and, you know, some of these miscellaneous things, yeah, they're, they're important, but they're not must haves. They're not stuff we have to do. But they've got to be on there because we've got to see the visibility of that and then decide based on where we are cash-wise, what's the right timing to pay those as we see where we are with our debt. But we know we start paying down the debt, it frees up cash. And that's what Davenport showed. You know, you start saving on the interest, it starts freeing up cash. So we take that cash, that will allow us to do some, something with that freed up cash. So, so that's, you know, that's my only input. We're all on the same page now, finally. We, we got, we got to focus the lens, though. We got to really focus on a very good cash flow statement, you know, that we're all working from as we talk about it. So, so we know where the numbers are month, not in month to month. I would say, I would say a yearly cash flow statement. You see, you see it in yearly buckets. You might show this year in, in six-month increments or something, you know, because your cash intake is in six-month buckets on tax intake. But anyway, if we do that, I think we'll make good decisions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other discussion on this for now? All right. So item five is discussion on school referendum language. Let me ask you, do you want to go first? Do you want to do this, the public comment first?
Let me do this first.
Okay, go ahead.
Before we even get into this, I'd sent an email earlier today in regards to the referendum for the city. If someone would just watch my back for the next few minutes, I'd appreciate it. Last December, December of 18, we passed a ordinance which would allow the city to have a referendum if four-fifths of council agreed to have a referendum in the city. That and other ordinances were passed to amend certain sections of the charter. That was prefiled on January the 9th of 2019. On January the 31st of 2019, the Rules Committee pulled out the referendum language of the bill. The charter that we have online is incorrect as it has that charter language in there. So that charter language that we recommended is not law and we are not authorized at the moment to do a charter, to do a referendum. I've reached out to Israel Quinn's office in regards to this matter. They advised me that it was pulled out in the Rules Committee by then former Speaker, or former Speaker of the House now Kirk Cox. For various reasons, he chose to pull that out of our legislation. So at this point, we cannot have a referendum in the city unless it's specifically authorized by law. And there are, I think, maybe about 10 or 12 instances that specifically authorize a referendum. I sent those to you all earlier today with the code sections. There may be others. I just did not have time to continue to go through the, all the codes to determine whether or not that referendum would be authorized. Now, there's several ways to fix this problem. One, as I mentioned in my email earlier, I will, according to Delegate Quinn, I will communicate with the governor's office to see if there's anything that he would be willing to do to put that in the legislation this year for us. And we will see if that happens. But I will get that communication out to them tomorrow, Thursday, so that they can have that to deal with over the next four weeks of this session. So really, what we're doing right here is an exercise in futility in regards to referendum language. And this is the referendum language that we would be discussing tonight if we could have a referendum. But since we can't have a referendum, I don't even know if it's something the council wants to discuss or if you want to fuss at me in regards to the referendum piece. It's not part of the city charter at this point. I'll take the heat for that. But we're trying to correct it. So I'll leave it up to you all if you want to go forward with this discussion or not.
When did you say the charter change was pulled out of the legislation?
It was prefiled on January the 9th of 2019. It's House Bill 2947. And then on January the 31st of 2019, all of our other charter changes were included and were adopted by the House and the Senate and passed into law, except for that charter change provision on a referendum. It was pulled out in the Rules Committee by what I've been told was Speaker Kirk Cox.
Any reason for it, do you know?
I have my suspicions, but I don't have any concrete reason.
So is, there's no mechanism in place that when your language gets pulled out of the legislation that you get notified? So there's no mechanism for the representative getting notified or any feedback?
We went back through, I think I've searched my emails today and I don't, I think Ms. Storm has looked as well. We didn't have any notification that this had occurred.
And you just found out about this today?
Roughly about 10:30 this morning.
And how'd you find out about it?
Well, we were doing research in regards to referendum. And when we started looking into it a little bit deeper to make sure we had our eyes dotted and our teeth crossed, we ran across this situation.
So really, it was a case of, there was no notification from the, from the speaker at the time, from his office. He had an objection to this and then I guess maybe he didn't even let Delegate Quinn know. And, and if he didn't know, he couldn't let us know.
Well, you know, I think you can always blame anybody for an error like this. Ultimately, it falls on my head. We should have followed up to make sure that it passed. And, you know, I take full responsibility for that.
So there are other municipal locations in the state of Virginia that allow a referendum for the same reason we're asking for the charter change, correct? We're not asking for anything that's odd?
We're not asking for anything that's odd or something that can't be done. I mean, there are other localities that do have referendum provisions. Some of those referendum provisions are very specific. Others are more broad, like the language that we have. It's, you asked for my opinion, I'll give it. Speaker Cox was not one of the most, was not one of the biggest supporters of the casino idea. And I think he saw this as an opportunity to prevent us from being able to have a referendum on the casino back in the spring of 19. And that's why it was pulled out.
And what jurisdiction is he over? What municipal?
He is, I want to, is he Rich, or not Richmond? Petersburg area.
Colonial Heights.
Colonial, that's right, yeah.
Since you brought it up, that this would not affect the ability, should the casino language bill pass?
That's correct. The casino bill has language. And if you, under, I think it's section 24.2 hyphen 684 of the code, which deals with referendums, it specifically says, this is how you do referendums if there is a referendum to be had. And, or unless it's specifically authorized under some other code section. And in our case, the casino legislation would be authorized under Title 58 for casino gaming for that legislation. And it spells out specifically, I've read that code section numerous times over the past week. It spells out exactly what has to be said in order to have that referendum. And it's very simple. And it's very simple language. It says, does the locality support having casino gaming at a certain address to be operated by such and such organization?
What is the deadline to get legislation submitted to try to get this? Have we done missed the deadline?
We've already missed that deadline. That's why Delegate Quinn, I immediately called his office when I noticed this. And that's why he suggested we reach out to the Governor's Office to get this corrected.
So, can you explain what the Governor's Office would do in this situation?
Basically, from my understanding, they would introduce a bill to allow us to have the referendum language in our charter.
And since they're doing, since at the General Assembly, they're doing the crossover stuff now where they're sending bills that pass one house, go to the other house. So, would this be a bill that would just be introduced that they couldn't make amendments to? Just what would prevent it from having to go through the same process?
Those technicalities, I can't answer.
Have you reached out to Pillion's office?
I have not. He would more than likely give me the same answer based on the fact that maybe if we'd have noticed this two weeks ago, we'd have a different story right now. We could have got some legislation introduced through the regular process in order to get that charter language put back or the referendum language put back into our charter where we are at crossover. And in the next four hours and 48 minutes, it will technically switch. There's no feasible way to get this in through one of our representatives, whether it's Senator Pillion or Delegate Quinn.
Okay. So, there is still a shot explaining to the Governor what has happened here?
Yes.
That this, we thought that we had this in place?
Right.
And then at the last minute, we realized that that was pulled out for whatever reasons and we was caught blindsided because we didn't keep up with the modifications and the changes. So, I would like to see you move forward with that with light speed in the morning.
I agree.
Not a problem.
Do we want to discuss a little bit about these potential questions on the screen or do we want to wait until?
I mean, my opinion is it's, as I said before, an exercise in futility at this point. You're more than welcome to discuss it, but.
We'll go through it since you prepared it just so we can see the highlights.
Sure. You know, my goal is to keep this simple for people to understand what we're trying to do in order to have a new school here in the city. And here are three options. One, should the city build a new school and leave it that simple? It doesn't discuss location. It doesn't discuss how it's going to be financed. It just asks the people, generally speaking, do we need a new school? And I guess I could put new elementary school. The second question would be, should the city build a new school through the PPA process at the proposed Van Pelt location? Now, I think you've got a couple of issues with this language. One, it's talking about the financing process. And then two, it's talking about location. Location is generally left up to school boards. That's Title 22.1 hyphen 79. That spells out the powers and duties of school boards. Three, should the city build a new school through the PPA process at any other location within the city? And any other location within the city means anywhere that I think the school board would agree to have another school located. And once again, it talks about the PPA process. I will forward this real quick. In conjunction with my language, I shared these with Dr. Perrigen. What he has added to this is in italics, should the city build a new school to ensure student staff safety slash health and to be in compliance with federal law 88? Should the city build a new school through the financing model procured through the PPA process at the proposed Van Pelt location? Or should the city build a new school through the financing model procured through the PPA process at any other location within the city? Whoops. Go back. I messed up. There we go. So, you have a couple of different options, really six different options to choose from. It's something to consider until some point in the future for the referendum language.
Well, I see kind of issues with all those questions. Just depends on how you want to look at it. One, PPA, nobody's going to understand what, you know, what really that means when you put a question like that, you know, on a referendum ballot.
Well, and then that's the problem because if you have to explain the PPA process in a question, you're going to have a question, you know, two paragraphs long.
So, really it comes down to what we're trying to get answered is we're saying, okay, community, do you want to allow the city to obligate 18 million in principal over 30 years, which turns into, you know, $30 million of financed monies paid monthly to build a new elementary school? Do you want to have a moral obligation of that kind of a debt facing you over the next 30 years? So, we're trying to say, do you really want to take that on as a community? I think everybody knows, you know, you're going to have to build a school. So, just to say, you know, should the city build a new school, you're going to get a number of different answers to that because most people say, well, yeah, we need to build a new school. But that's not really what we're talking about. It's more than just build a school. It's build a school with the current state of where we are financially, right? That's the question we're trying to get resolved because it's a community decision because it's a big number. You know, it's a multimillion dollar project over a number of years. So, and the PPA doesn't really explain it because you just, you know, PPA is just a, you know, four letters there. But somehow I think you've got to say, you know, should the city obligate itself morally or legally to X dollars to build a new school, blah, blah, blah. You know, so you've got to put some kind of numbers in there to show that, you know, that's what we're deciding on.
Yeah, I agree with that, but we need to keep it simple and not confusion, confuse, get everybody confused. And if we give them the fact that it is a dollar amount, give them the fact that it is either going to be a legal or moral obligation and give them the fact that it's going to be at Van Pelt if that is where the school board decides it's going to be, that's where they've made a full circle and ended back up to. If that's what they zero in on, it needs to be straightforward and very simple and nothing about it being complicated and skewed. Because sometimes it's hard to figure out what is really being said. And we don't need anything like that. We need it straightforward. This is the proposal. 18 million and here recently I've heard 20 million. So, the school board needs to zero in, is it 18 million? Is it 20 million? Is it going to be proposed at Van Pelt or is it going to be proposed centrally located? And then we need the verbiage in there that it is going to be either or because somebody's got to sign that lease. It's either going to be moral or it's going to be legal and binding. Is this city ready to take on another debt like that? Yes or no? But it needs to be all straightforward, all simple, no confusion, and everybody know exactly what they're voting for.
So, I think your second question there is the closest. If you could just take and say, should the city build a new school at the proposed Van Pelt location up to a maximum of $20 million principal and $35 million over 30-year financing arrangement? You know, you've got to put something in there that explains the cash. And then you've almost got what you need in that second question because you're talking about the location. You've just got to explain the financing somehow to make it where anybody can understand it.
So, I'll preface this, you know, A, that I was opposed to the referendum and B, that it's all a moot point right now unless you can get this fixed through Governor Northam's office.
Well, and I'm not trying to take the heat off here, but we've never had this referendum language before in the charter. So, this is not, you know, if we'd have never come up with a referendum language in December of 18, we'd still be in the same boat today. We, you know, we wouldn't have the referendum language to deal with. So, it wouldn't have been authorized as it was. So, I'm not trying to take the heat off of me. I said, I'll sit here and take the heat for that. I should have followed up. But everything else came, everything came through that we submitted on MuniCode. When you go to our city code, it's just when you go back to Legislative Services, you can see where it was pulled out.
And that's fine. I think, you know, just, I preface, I use those, you know, disclaimers to say this. You know, if we ended up doing a referendum, I think one thing that you said was important, that the school board chooses the location. We've never picked the location. We've talked about the financing. So, I don't, I mean, I would agree that we probably need to say something in there about the amount. If we ended up doing this, we needed to say something about the amount of the school and maybe about the funding process and the funding mechanism. But I don't think we need to say whether it's at Van Pelt or anywhere else because that's not our decision whether we do a referendum or not. It's not our decision where the location is.
I have to think of a lot of what-if scenarios with my day job. So, I'll kind of come up with a few here in this situation. I'm looking at the second question and I think, and to back up, maybe there have not been enough what-if questions asked previously in the city with other things like a golf course, a landfill, a retail development. So, what if, if we are, if we have the wording in there about the PPA process and then six months, a year, you know, other avenues open up, other things happen in the city and we can build a school, but we don't have to use the PPA process? But there was already a referendum done and we said, yes, we should do this PPA process. But at that point, we can pay for it a different way. I have a few questions about that. And then, well, kind of what the mayor just said about the, well, the second question there about the location, about should there be any location in there at all if it says, should it be at Van Pelt? And then again, down the road, another location, something happens and something opens up and there's another possibility. But we've already had the wording, the Van Pelt location in there. And then should it even be in there at all because, you know, is that a city council decision or is that a school board decision? So, I have some questions about just trying to get the wording right.
I'll just say, I've got a lot of questions about the referendum. As I said last time, if this is something we want to do and we put it into the, as you mentioned, or thought we'd put it into the charter, but it's very vague, there's no framework around that. I mean, to, you know, again, we're talking about this particular item, but why are we, what constitutes something that should go to a referendum? I mean, I think that's something we need to talk about. And to be honest, I'd like to see how other localities do this. You said, you know, that others have this. A lot of them, I think, do it only because it's by the state law. And I mentioned that last time, that there's really never been a discussion about what makes this, you know. So, and that's another issue is that way, when you get to these issues, people know from the get-go that, you know, ultimately this will be decided, not something that comes up the same night that you vote on something. That's another issue I have. We've already voted on moving this forward with the PPA process. I don't quite understand how you do that, have a referendum on something that council's already decided on. As far as the language, I think, you know, all these what ifs, and that's a good one. If you put it in, you know, the school should be built through a PPA process at Van Pelt and say, people say, no. Then the school board comes back and say, well, we want to do it at a different location. And that would come back with, and then, you know, really in my mind, if you've done it for one project, put it out to a referendum, there's no reason to even discuss it. It should just go straight to a referendum because you've already said this is the avenue you're going to pursue. You know, so that's a whole nother issue. And the thing is, if it was to get voted down, at what point could the schools bring it back? I mean, I'm sure they would look for other avenues, maybe different locations. So, there's a lot of things just in the language of this. But I think, to me, the bigger point is if we're going to use referendums as a tool for governance, we need to put some framework around that. And we haven't really had those discussions about when items, what would make an item come up for a referendum. And so, that, you know, as I say, I'd like to also, before we had that kind of discussion, see what other localities do, how they word things, what, how it's done in other places.
Well, in regards to Mr. Farham's question about the PPA process, I don't think, unless we're paying cash, the process is going to have to go through the PPA process. I was, when I was in Richmond this past week, I met with our bond council, I met with Davenport, I met with school board council. There is no other process to procure a new school for the city unless it goes through the PPA process. Now, what is difficult to understand on the PPA process, there is a financing mechanism that is up to the developer to find. So, the PPA process allows us to do this so that it does not count against our constitutional debt limit. It's just how is the financing model going to work? That's the question that has to be answered in order for the process to work. But right now, off the top of my head, I think you could leave the PPA process in there, that language in there or some language similar to that because, as I said, unless we're paying cash for it, you're going to have to have that PPA process.
I honestly think, you know, kind of like I said, there are so many theoreticals right now. I don't know, you know, what we can, what we can do with this until we figure out what our options are on whether or not we can even legally have a referendum.
Well, I mean, and quite frankly, the issue that we're facing and really what irritated me on Friday, January the 17th was we could not get a answer on how this financing model was going to work. And I believe on Sunday night of January 19th, I sent an email to bond council, Davenport, saying I wanted a process in place within the next two weeks where we could begin actually having an educated discussion about how this is going to work. And over the past two weeks, we've worked on that. We have come up with some solutions that are in their draft form right now that I'll be able to present hopefully at the next council meeting to you all so that we can actually see how this process will work for us. The issue in regards to what Mr. Harley said, you know, we've already approved the PPA comprehensive agreement. You know, that was a council action that was approved by a 3-2 vote. I do, and none of the amendments to the comprehensive agreement, including a contingency on a referendum vote. So, I do think that there would be an issue to have the referendum vote on the fact that we've already authorized the comprehensive agreement. Doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, but I do think there could be some potential issues with that not being a contingency. I forgot one other thing you said, Mr. Harley, I was going to answer. But we're in a position right now where we can work through this process a little bit slower and get this done right so that we can make as many people in this city as happy as possible for the least amount of money to the city overall. And I think we're, due to this unique position we're in, we need to take advantage of it and make sure it's done right.
So, why do you think the state wanted the casino legislation to go through city referendum?
Well, that was how it was proposed. I think our local delegation, when they proposed this legislation last year and even the developers said, you know, they don't want to develop any of these projects unless the people in the area want to have that project in their back door.
Exactly. So, we talked about not having a framework, but common sense, they didn't want to do a huge project that would change the landscape of this city for decades without a referendum vote. Exactly what we're talking about here. This is something that changes the landscape of this community for decades. So, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that's common sense. That's why you have a referendum. It's not five people being smarter than. It's not five people being smarter than the community. It's, it's a major decision for this community that they have to live with for 30, 40, 50 years. That's why you have a referendum. So whether it's $10 million, or 15, or 20, or 35, whether it's a moral obligation or illegal, you do it because this community, these parents and these kids, and, and this whole decision should not reside on this wooden table, because it's a huge impact. That's what common sense tells you. So you don't need this major discussion about framework, because it's a major deal for this community. All you got to do is listen to this community. They've been up to that podium time and time again, being against this project. And either we've got our head in the sand or we're not listening. So it's a major deal. So let them decide. Who are we to say we're smarter than them? Let them decide. This is their community. Like I said, I don't have a dog in the hunt. I mean, I have nothing in this fight. I have no kids in the school system, but I know it should be their decision, because they're the parents. They're the ones that have to deal with this in 2030 and 2040. That's why you have a referendum.
I just, we've never, the methodology is new, we've never had a referendum. I think you got to be careful, or think about the precedent you're setting. And, you know, is it, is it the fact that you're borrowing money? I mean, we keep talking about the PPEA process and that we need to put the amount in there and borrow money. The casino has nothing to do with borrowing money, and yet they put that in there. I mean, I, I sit there and I thought, "At some point, we're going to need a new jail." Would that go up for a referendum?
Probably.
Probably, you know, it depends. But that's because we're borrowing money. If it's all about borrowing money, then we could vote to go to the regional jail, which could cost the city probably, maybe more in terms of an annual budget, and have a detrimental impact on the city potentially. So, you know, again, that's the kind of things, around what, at what point do you put something out to a referendum? And understand that from the very beginning. With the casino, it, it was brought up, the, the developers and, and the legislatures, from the very beginning, everyone understood that. It didn't come up again at, at the last minute, and that's why I think if we, that's why I say we need some kind of framework, to understand, not just for this issue, and not the language we're talking about, whatever we do here, it will set a precedent and it will come back, whether we're up here or somebody else, in five, 10 years, they'll go back and they say, "Well, you did it for this, we need to do it for that." Or, "You had the language this way, you need to do that." So you need to make it very clear under what circumstances, and, and think that through a little bit, because again, there's a lot of different situations that, that I, I could see why you would want to do that, but you have to narrow that down. I think, you know, the, the general consensus among everybody is you, you don't want to make a mistake in the past, and that's what's always been brought up. What we've had, the landfill, the golf course, the, the falls, I mean, all of those have more to deal with the city stepping out of its traditional role and taking on enterprise, business enterprises, not things like building a school, or building a jail, or things like that. Those are traditional functions of government, you know, so to me, that, that would be the thing that, that you'd want to avoid, because that seems to be where the most, in the past anyway, the biggest problems have been.
And maybe feeding off of what you just said, I do think it's important to have a bigger discussion about the framework of what you would have if you have referendum language, because using the jail as an example, just follow through with me with this theoretical here. Say we put out a referendum, do you want to build a jail? And it comes back, "No." Okay, we put out another referendum, do you want to close the jail and go to regional? And it comes back, "No." What do you want to do? Do you just have, do you have an open-ended essay question for a referendum to garner ideas? I, I think it might be beneficial, if you're doing a referendum language, to have, here's option A, here's option B. You know, we're either going to, in the jail situation, we're either going to shut it down, we're going to build a new one, we're going to send them to regional, you know. So it, it might be better, instead of a yes or no thing, to even have Plan A and Plan B, you know, for, and, and that's, and that's, that's the thing where you have to have a bigger discussion about what kind of parameters do you want to set to have referendum? And then, like the vice mayor said, what triggers a referendum? How do you, how do you decide? Is there a certain number that you're going to go with? If it's over this certain amount, that you're going to go to a referendum? So it's, it's, you have to be very careful with the precedent you set for 10 or 20 or 30 years down the road.
Well, I hear what y'all were saying, but the bottom line is, the people have got to be able to express their opinions, because so much of what the people wants falls on deaf ears with governments. The referendum framework, in my opinion, needs to be written around the basis that if the project has the potential to be detrimental to your locality, the people should have the right to vote on it on a referendum. Because government has a serious, serious spending problem. It's been a while since I've checked all the numbers, but I do believe that our federal government has approaching a $24 trillion deficit. The state of Virginia is $130 billion, and this city is $105 million. I'm going to say it again, people, government has a spending problem, and they don't want to stop spending, because they have the mindset that they have taxing authority and you will pay up. They feel like they have a green light to do whatever they want to, whenever they want to, and you are going to pay for it. So it is your job, the taxpayer, the voter, to step up and look at government and say, "Enough is enough," and demand that government work for you, instead of you working for the government. Today's government has got it all backwards, and it's going to take the people to step up and say, "No more. This is our money. The Federal Reserve is we, the people. Look on the back of your money. It's not the president, the Congress, the House, the Senate. It's the city money, it's not ours, it's yours. Demand that government stand accountable, it's your job."
So you said that you think that a referendum framework would be good, going back to what you started at the beginning there, to determine, you know, what is detrimental. But how do you, how do you define what's detrimental? I mean, I would agree that getting into the landfill business was bad, that getting into the business of developing the falls was bad.
And we should have had a referendum for that.
Absolutely. If those would have been on a referendum, it would have never happened.
Hold on, y'all, I'm not done. I would, I would agree that those were bad, but as Mr. Hartley said, it is a function of government to build schools and provide safe education and safe environments for children. That's much different than a landfill, and you can sit over there and scoff if you want. That's much different than a landfill, that is much different than a retail development. So you're looking at it, you're looking at two completely separate things as one thing.
No, you're not. No, when you're obligating a city for $18 million and $30 something million over 30 years, that's not the same thing. That's a big obligation for this city.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So you hear Ms. Marnie sitting up there and these people saying, "We don't want this." That's what they're doing. They're crying out to this council to wake up and have some common sense. We don't need to take on any more obligated payments, period. We are not in a position for that. Doesn't matter if it's a jail, or a school, or a fleet of buses.
Mr. Mumpower, I know you want to pontificate on this. We're discussing the specific language of doing a referendum that we currently can't do.
No, I see where you're going with it. I'm done.
Okay, I'm glad you do.
Yeah, because I don't agree with anything you're saying.
So, do you have anything else? Do you have anything else to talk about, about the referendum language?
I will when you finish. Go ahead.
All right, we're done on this item, so we'll go to the consent agenda.
[inaudible]
Oh, we have signed up, yeah, we did. Yeah. First person's Mr.
[inaudible]
Hold on. Hold on. Hold on, hold on. We have two people signed up, we want to, since there's no public comment, we want to hear from them.
The people need a voice. Let them speak.
I think it'd be good if everyone abides by the, the timer, the three minutes, I'd be willing to.
Okay. So two people got signed up, Ginger Fleaners first.
And while she's coming up, I just wanted to just say, I, this isn't completely on the agenda at all, but I've just received notice on my phone, Mr. City Manager, that the state senate has passed Senate Bill 3629 to 11.
That's good news.
Go ahead.
Ginger Fleaner, Sherwood Road. To a point, I am absolutely speechless. Then, to another point, I am absolutely furious. To my recollection, I don't believe anybody carried my kids for nine months, except me. Therefore, I don't believe that any of you guys have a right to dictate what happens to my children and where they should go. Virginia is communist, we do not need a dictator running this place. It's ridiculous. I've said it once, and I've said it again, and I'll say it until the day I die, I will do whatever I have to do to fight for my kids. You all sit up here and want to talk about words? You can't even act on them yourself. You want people to come to these things? You've said it. You've said it. You've said it. You want people here, you want to hear their opinions, but you're sitting up there like daggone teenagers, not listening to a darn thing. It's absolutely ridiculous. And I have had enough. I have had enough. It's not fair to me, my family, my kids, much less the people that live in this community. It is not fair. You've got a school board that had a job to take care of our schools for over 10 years. They have failed to do so. Nobody is holding them responsible for anything, but yet you want to come and take it out on my kids for their mistakes. How much sense does that make? It makes no sense. I am sick of this. I have been in this the first day it started, not even knowing what I was stepping into. You were there, and you were there. I don't remember if you were there or not, it was probably a good thing you might not have been there. My understanding, you voice your opinion at these things. I have been doing it since day one. And the most of the time, I get looks, people looking at me like I am absolutely crazy, and I'm okay with it. I am perfectly fine with it. If it causes me to look as ignorant as ignorant can get, stand up and fight for what's right for my kids that live with me, not you all, not him or anybody else, I will darn sure do it. Y'all are grown men, you need to start acting like it. It's called responsibility. Start doing your jobs. It's not just you all living in this city. You keep going at the rate you're going, and it's going to keep declining. Then you can sit and twiddle your thumbs.
All right, next person is Mr. Pollard.
I think that the council does need to work out a framework on how and when a referendum is appropriate to use, but I think that is something that can be done, it just needs to be done. Define exactly what is detrimental to the city, and I would tend to agree that a substantial amount of debt, which would need to be defined in that, is detrimental to the city. Some other things, such as apparently the, the state legislature believes that a casino would be one of those things that would have potential of being detrimental to the city, and as such, is one of those things that should be voted on by the residents. There, I'm not sure exactly how the wording should be, but it is something that could be worked out, hammered out and discussed, so that such things can be defined. But one thing that it seems that everyone present agrees on is that a substantial amount of debt is one of those things that does have very much the potential of being detrimental. And as such, I strongly believe that the people should have the choice of whether or not we get into that debt, and that large amount of debt would have prevented us from getting into the landfill and from getting into the falls, and potentially getting into an expensive school. Now, if the people had decided to vote and approve the falls, and vote to approve the landfill, that would be an entirely different matter. Then, then the people would have a stake in the problems that went along with it, as well as the potential benefits. And we probably wouldn't have the, the issues that we have with the falls now, because at least the people would have been behind it. And the people weren't behind it, and then we saw all sorts of problems because of it. With the matter at hand, I think the people should have a say in whether or not we get the new school, so that the people then have a say in whether or not it's successful. And if taxes have to go up to pay for it, then the people will have approved that. Thank you.
All right, consent agenda.
No, we, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can't. I know, but we can't do it right now, I'm sorry. All right, well, I appreciate it. Please, I, I don't want to have to gavel you. I appreciate your input, but not right now. On to the consent agenda, motion and second.
We move.
And, excuse me, to clarify, this is for everything except item seven, which we'll vote on after this.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for item seven.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve everything except item seven from Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Mo.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item seven, consider a street closure request for the 100th anniversary celebration of the Blue Stocking Club on April 19th, 2020. Looking for a motion and a second.
I move we approve that.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Mumpower. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Aye.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
abstain.
Osborne.
Yes. We stand adjourned.[1707.08]